That was the best.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the October 8, 2012 regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. And we have a lighter dais up here tonight. Shannen McNally, a board member, is out of town, and two other board members are out of town, Lyle Smith and Mike Kinsey. They're visiting actually High Tech High School in San Diego, California, as part of the district's high school task force. So they are on school business. Now please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will read the district's mission statement. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. Our first item on our agenda is Exhibit A on page one, and it is a donation from the East High Boosters. And Crystal Buzza is here to present that. This is really a second part of donation that was made a little over a month ago. It is for, and I'll read the motion here, that the Board of Education accept this donation of $4,225 from the East High Golf outing for the 2012-2013 school year. Get that motion on the floor.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
In discussion, and Crystal, this, it looks like it's a follow-up from the first donation of $6,775, which I think brings a total to $11,000 total?
That's correct. They, the boosters have been, had a very successful golf outing. They did a number of different things for fundraising, and they're just finally finishing up the rest of totals. They actually thought they had the entire totals in August, but there was some other fundraising that was done. So they had raised a total of $11,000, which is significantly more than they had done last year. I think last year they were right around the $5,000 or so mark. So they had a really successful golf outing.
Oh, fantastic. And it's good if, that there was more money coming in after they checked the-
Yes, and from what I understand, that is the last of it that will be coming in for that particular event.
No, that's fantastic. So, and do you know who is involved primarily with the-
I don't, unfortunately.
We can talk to Mr. Pace too as well to see that, but-
Yep.
No, we appreciate the gift.
They had a lot of business sponsors this last year, which I think made a big difference.
Oh, fantastic. Okay. Great. Thank you, Crystal. Any other questions? Discussions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on the agenda is an exhibit regarding bullying prevention month. October is National Bullying Prevention Month, and we've got a proclamation to read and approve. And what I will do is Adrian Carlson is here for the district from Student Services to talk about kind of what's going on. If we could, we'll get the motion on the floor. The declaration is on page three of the agenda, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education proclaim the month of October 2012 as bullying prevention month within the Waterloo Community School District.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay. And Adrian.
Okay. Actually, at about 5:30, Dr. Bev Smith went over to the city council to have the mayor read a proclamation from the city for this same issue, so that's where she's at. And we've done several things that we have put into place for this month. We're sending out a press packet to each building. Each administrator and each staff will receive a press packet that will include a prevention month calendar. We've given them activities that they can do, and we've asked each administrator to assign two additional ideas or activities that their building will do, specific to anti-bullying for this month. We've included the bullying harassment policy in REG to each building, just to remind them that this is the policy that our board has in place for our school district. We've included a chart that says, "What is your school doing for Anti-Bullying Month?" And we'll ask them to fill that in, turn it in at the end of the month, and we will present that to the board next month. And then the last thing is, we've had the bullying hotline for a while, and since before I was here, but this year, we talked about students don't necessarily make phone calls as much anymore. They're texting and emailing. So we've added an email form to our website with the assistance of the tech department, so they can anonymously send an email that says, "This is occurring in my building," or "This is happening to me," and we can follow up with that building administrator and say, "This has been reported. This is occurring in your building," so they can keep an eye out for it. But they also have the ability to text to us. So then the text will be generated, and the email will be generated, and those come to my email inbox, and then we can follow up with those building administrators. So some new ideas, so we can have the kids have the opportunity to be able to report those things anonymously through email or through texting. And a lot of times you'll see kids in the middle of having a conversation with you, and they're just texting away. So maybe even during an incident, then we'll be alerted to something happening. So we wanted to make sure that we can reach the kids where they're at, and that's where we're finding all of our teenagers right now, is with their phone in their hands. So that's what we have going for the month. We've sent some additional resources to the building as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
How are you making it known to the kids that it's anonymous?
We have, we've created flyers that will be sent out in the press packet. We have, it's going on our Facebook page. It's on, it's already on our website. Katrina has already updated some of that to our website. And then the building administrators and teachers are encouraged to talk to the students. They're also encouraged to call the bullying hotline or even send an email, so they know what's being said, so they know what their students are actually hearing when they make that phone call, or when they try to send through the form or through the text.
Are the students wearing these bracelets?
The students will be provided with the bracelets. The elementary students are being provided with stickers that they're able to wear, and we have specific dates set on the calendar that they'll be wearing those. There's a specific date, it's the 15th, that they're encouraged to wear blue shirts. But there's several other activities during the month. It's also, we'll have Red Ribbon Week during the month, and it's also Bus Safety Week during this month. So there's a lot of activities during this month, and we made sure we included all of that on the calendar.
Is there a little pledge that they take or sign about not bullying?
There is actually quite a few activities, and some of those are on websites where there's like a national petition that kids can sign and say, "I will not participate and I will report any bullying." We've talked about, maybe they could do that in their building, create a petition for their specific building, or they can encourage the kids to go online to sign those petitions as well. So we, there are those activities available.
Thank you.
And could you kind of elaborate a little bit on wearing the blue shirt? I had a couple parents say to me, "Like, blue shirts prevent bullying." That's not the intent of it, correct?
Right. The shirts are, there's eight school districts who are part of an initiative, and they're identifying that specific day to wear the blue shirts. They've ordered the shirts. They are T-shirts. They do need to wear them with a collared shirt, and they'll be wearing them, especially at the high school level. I know the high school students have really been urging other students to purchase those T-shirts. I think the cost is $6. And if they don't have one of those blue shirts, they're encouraged to wear another blue shirt, and the purpose of that is just raising the awareness for Anti-Bullying Month.
Yeah, and I know they did it at Kitchell on the first, on Monday of last week, and maybe at other schools. And yeah, I understand the point. It doesn't mean that just by wearing a blue shirt, it-
Right.
Problem solved, but it was more to-
Right.
Have a visual reminder to people that this is what it was.
Right. And October 1st was the day that Yonkers had the T-shirts available, and they were dated for October 1st, 2012, to raise the awareness. And some schools did wear, at the high school level, did that as well, besides some of the elementaries. But these are shirts that they've actually created on their own for the 15th, and they have the school districts listed on the back.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And if not, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations, and looking out in the audience, if there's anybody that would like to speak, excuse me, please feel free. It's, this is the time to do it. But we have kind of a lighter audience as well, just like we have a lighter board, so if nobody, then I won't read the card, and we'll move on to the next item then. Tonight, the consent agenda includes, the next item on our agenda is a consent agenda, and tonight that includes the minutes of the September 24 regular board meeting, our last board meeting two weeks ago, personnel appointments and adjustments since our last board meeting, bills due and payable between board meetings, a request to the Cedar Valley Sports Commission for sponsorship for the Battle of Waterloo Wrestling Tournament, a grant request to the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa for standardized dress code assistance in the amount of $20,000. And then finally, the delegate assembly representative naming school board members as delegate assembly representative for the Iowa Association of School Board, naming a board member for the Legislative Action Network member, and then finally for the Urban Education Network representative. And again, those are all school board member designations for the state association meetings that are coming up in November. Are there any items that board members wish to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay. All I ask, that Item E, bills due and payable between board meetings, which is on page 14, be removed. And hearing no others, all those in favor of the consent agenda, with the exception of Item E, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse, I'm sorry, we need to-
I move, we approve. Consent agenda with the exception of Item E.
I'll second it.
Thank you. And now, any further discussion?
I do, Michael, just the one payment to AEA 267, the million four. Is that like for the contract services with them for the year, or how?
That is actually the final payment for special ed tuition, primarily for Castle Hill last year, but a few odds and ends of others, but it's the majority of that.
Okay. Great. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Great. Any further questions? Okay. If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Then that takes us to Item E. It's on page 14. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable, and the bills paid between board meetings.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay. And before discussion, I will abstain from voting on this matter, because as an attorney, I represent a client who's paid by bill. With that, any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair abstains, motion carried. The next item on the agenda, it's Item I in your agenda packet on page 28, and it is for the Iowa voluntary preschool contracts. And this regards the preschool contracts we have with a number of entities involved. They are listed on the program, and Jane Lindeman, if you could give us, we'll actually get the motion on the floor, but if you could, give us some background information on that. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the Iowa voluntary preschool contracts for the 2012-2013 school year.
I so moved.
Thank you, in a second. Okay. And Dr. Lindeman.
Sure. This is the fifth year that we've had contracts with the community preschools through the volunteer preschool program, and we were able to add two sites. We had six last year, but we were able to add two sites, the Sacred Heart site and the YMCA. I think everything else is basically the same as what you approved last year. There's two types of programs. They can either use the itinerant teacher, which, which means that they're using our teachers to provide 10 hours of instruction, or they can provide their own teacher. The allocation to them is dependent on whether they use our teacher, whether they provide their own.
Okay. And just for the audience at home, this is for the Learn and Play Early Childhood Center in Evansdale, and then the A-Z Early Childhood Center on Donald Street in Waterloo.
How does this-
And all the rest below too.
Okay, excuse me, yes.
Those are the ones that use our teacher, but then there are some that provide their own.
How does this work? If they use our teachers, they are paid with dollars from the facility that they are working?
Right. If they, if they use our teacher, they get a certain allocation per child.
Right. I saw $12.50 for-
Yeah, it's-
Thirty minutes. You have to, yeah.
It's for 10, 10 hours of instruction for the number of kids that they have in there. So they would come, like maybe, actually, I'm not exactly sure whether it's four days a week or three days a week. I didn't ask that question, and Charlotte isn't able to be here tonight, but I can find that out if you want. But it's 10 hours of instruction per week. So they get a certain allocation from us to, to do that. And then the money that they get for that would be used for direct instructional costs, like curriculum manipulatives, things that are involved in direct instruction. If they don't use our teacher, they get a little bit larger allocation, which also would pay the teacher's salary.
Okay. So you probably don't know this. How many of our teachers do they use?
One.
One.
And she split between the two sites that use itinerant teachers.
Okay.
Does that answer your question? You have another question, I can tell. You can try me out. I'm gonna do the best I can.
Okay. I know, I was thinking about, okay, we said we have one of, one of our teachers, and they share it with two sites.
Right.
So what determines, so if one site has a greater need than the other site, do they have to always split that time evenly?
Right. You know, I'm not exactly sure about that, but I do know that 10 is the minimum amount of time that we provide. So I think we just, we provide the 10, it has to be 10 hours. So if, if one building has a greater need, or one program has a greater need, you know, we would, we would assume, just like a classroom that might have a greater need than another, that the, the teacher would be able to meet the needs of the kids. I'm not sure if they would, they have other staff that they may hire through their funds, so, I mean, they might not be a certified teacher staff, but they may provide other people to work with those kids too.
Okay. What is this person doing with the other hours of their time?
Well, Bernice, you're just a stinker today.
Because I know as a teacher, I taught more than 20 hours. Is this a part-time person or a full-time person?
Um, you know, I'm just gonna get back with you. I thought, I was trying so hard to ask Charlotte everything that I thought she might need today. And I know Linda Miller is, is watching tonight, and I bet you she could answer that, but I don't know exactly, so I'm gonna get back with you on that.
Okay.
We might, we probably use them in another capacity for that, yeah.
I've always wondered about that, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Jane, I thought you did a very good job.
No, I will find that out. That's a very good question, so I will definitely get that to you.
We appreciate it.
Oh, I know. Do we get, do we get, we get some reimbursement from the state for providing preschool services?
We do. We get a .5 allocation, so the volunteer pre-K, the students have a .5 waiting.
Okay.
Which is $3,000 if anybody, that's, that's how much it is.
I think that's, it was .6, I think, and then it was cut back.
Right.
Just .5, yeah, for the legislature.
Correct.
Last year it was to five.
Okay.
Well, and this says that the specified maximum funding is 20, 10 per student.
Yeah, and they, that's 95% of our money to us goes to the, the programs, and 5% stays here.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on the agenda is a 28E agreement, which is a contract between, essentially between government entities, and it's with the Waverly-Shellrock School District for student placement at Expo Alternative Learning Center. The rec, it's on page 57. It's Exhibit J of your board packets, and the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the 28E agreement with, between the Waterloo Community School District and the Waverly-Shellrock School District for their resident students to enroll in the Expo Alternative Learning Center.
So moved.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. In discussion, and this, just for the audience benefit, I believe we have a number of agreements with surrounding districts regarding placement of students. And Dr. Norris, this seemed to be pretty similar to those other district contracts.
Absolutely. It's just one other district that we're able to partner with and create these alternative services.
Okay.
And so the districts can just choose kind of like if they, if there's an alternative high school, so like they could go to Cedar Falls, but they're choosing Waterloo and Expo, or?
Well, they, they are familiar with our program, and they will call and see if there's a slot available for, no different than we do, to, of course, we serve our kids first, and they'll talk with Cora and Adrian and find out if, if we can serve that student. And so it's really an individual on a case-by-case basis.
And then these are yearly contracts?
They are. The, the contract's yearly, but the students then may be a shorter term.
But they could fall in any of the-
Programming there.
It's a contract within Expo, so whether it was Web C or Star C, or the classic traditional Expo.
Okay. Yep.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda is another, similar contract to this, to Expo, but it's regarding the JROTC, the Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, at East High and West High. At West High, it's Air Force, and at East High, it's the Army. The recommended, it's on page 62 of your packet, Exhibit K. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the agreements for the above-named students to attend the JROTC programs as indicated for the 2012-2013 school year.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay. And again, this, this concerns actual specific students. We won't read the names, but their home districts are Columbus, Janesville, and Cedar Falls, and they're, actually, all four at West High with the Air Force JROTC program.
Do we know how large that program is at West, though?
It's about 120, I think. 110 to 120 students.
And I believe it's the only Air Force JROTC program in the state.
It is.
I think, I know there are Army, there are several in the state for Air Force. I think it's the only one. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That brings us to the last action item on our agenda, which is a technology upgrade, and Matt O'Brien is coming forward. It's regarding wired and wireless network upgrades at four of our schools. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of wireless and wired network equipment at a total cost of $160,487.30, 90% of which cost is to be reimbursed by federal E-rate funding. Get that motion on the floor.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay. And again, this is for network upgrades, and Matt O'Brien, if you could give us some information on this, and-
Sure.
Kind of what's, what it's doing, and what schools it will be installed.
Sure. So the good news is, is as is noted in your packets, we don't have to pay for the vast majority of these costs, because we're utilizing some grant dollars that we were able to get. Historically, the district has relied on E-rate funding to subsidize the cost of our phone, internet, and cellphone service, and that's called Priority One funding, which basically is more or less guaranteed if we dot all of our i's and cross all of our t's type of thing. This last winter, for, I believe the first time ever, I applied for, at least for the district, I applied for what's known as Priority Two funding, which is E-rate funding that's competitively awarded based off of the need of the population that the, the school serves. And we were notified recently that we were successful in that application, so that's the, the result of, of the board agenda item that's before you. So as was noted, we will actually end up only paying of that $160,000 cost, we'll only end up paying about 10% or 10% of that cost ourselves. The other 90% of that will be paid for out of federal E-rate dollars.
Which comes from the Universal Service Fund?
Which is, which is ultimately tax dollars.
Fine taxpayers of Waterloo.
It's ultimately tax dollars, but we're trying to get a larger portion of the tax dollars that citizens already have to pay back here in Waterloo, so that's-
There you go.
The net result of, of what's before you.
And on those lines, is that, like if I look, is it from, well, we have internet connection at our house, so if I looked closely at my bill, would there be-
If you look closely at your phone bill or cellphone bill, whether that's a, it's, yeah, it's phone or cellphone, and phone would include also voice-over IP, like if you had Vonage or MediaCom phone services included on those as well, there would be probably a line that said USF or Universal Service Fund, which is a tax that the FCC levies on personal phone communications. They put it into a big pool of money, and then they redistribute it, as I said, kind of according to priorities, and we've always gotten that Priority One funding for the district's use for phones, cellphone, and internet. And then this is the first time then that we went for, and have also been successful for that Priority Two, which allows us to do those internal connections, which is what's before you. So this is actually equipment for Carver-Cunningham, Highland, and Lincoln. Four of those schools, all four of those schools mentioned will have wireless network upgrades to the district's new wireless standard, which the board actually approved a, a large package about a year, year and a half ago for, for some of our other schools. So we kind of set the standard there. And then also for Cunningham and Lincoln, it's also upgrading all of their physical wired network connections as well.
Because Cunningham and Lincoln would be-
Cunningham and-
2002 and Cunningham?
Yeah, they're, they're in the eight-to-nine-year-old range. Typically, network hardware is, you know, seven-to-eight-year lifespan, so it's, it's, you know, right at that, that edge of a useful lifespan, so it's actually quite advantageous that we were gonna get this, that we were able to get these funds, as that's something that we'd be looking at sooner rather than later anyway.
It was just different to the, we still think of those as new schools.
Sure.
And they are, and the-
Mm-hmm. And from a facility standpoint, they absolutely are, but when you're almost talking, close to a decade in technology standards, that's, that's getting a little older, so.
So, so this allows them to be totally wireless, then?
Well, there's both wireless and wired network access available, so actually, all four of these schools have existing wireless networks, but they're older, slower wireless networks that don't have as dense of coverage. So this will speed up and make more wireless available in, in throughout the building, in all four of those buildings, which has kind of been our standard that we've been doing. So typically, tablets, laptops, all of those connect wirelessly. We still have wired networks available for all of our phones. All of our classrooms have phones which plug into the computer networks, as well as student desktops still plug in wired.
Okay. Thank you.
So is this, will this be as fast as all the other schools are faster?
This is our new standard, so it depends on which school you're comparing it to. We've updated some other buildings out of district funds as well, so it will be as fast as our fastest schools, and then faster than quite a few of our other schools, if that makes any sense.
Don't you like it when Matt talks techy to us?
I didn't even throw out any jargon in that statement.
That was wonderful.
That was good, Matt.
And I've also thought about it with some of our schools, and honestly, Orange will probably be the latest and most advanced school we have. Now, they, the Orange community had to wait the longest to new school, but once they do, it will be, yeah, it'll have the latest technology in it, but it's, it is amazing how quickly technology changes. Technology needs change.
Are there multiple vendors for this, or do you get bids for the services?
Sure. That's, that's actually a, a really good question. We actually, for both the wired bid and the wireless bid, only had one vendor that submitted We actually, for both the wired bid and the wireless bid, only had one vendor that submitted a qualified bid, meaning they, we had some others that submitted packages which weren't what we specified, that didn't meet the criteria. As far as how the bid process works, because this is E-rate funding, we have kind of their procedures that we have to follow, which actually, last winter, so this was almost a year ago, I had to post on the E-rate sites, I filed forms that basically request from vendors proposals, and it turned out that we only had really one vendor for each of these submit a proposal, which meant that the specifications that we had is the district.
But those vendors had to be approved and meet the qualifications of the E-rate?
Yeah, and, and to be, to be quite honest, you're, you're correct that there's some paperwork that has to be filed for a vendor to meet E-rate criterion to be able to, to bid. It's just one of those kind of formality things, I don't know, as, as long as, you know, the, as long as they're, I, I don't think the FCC is overly picky, I guess, on vendors that they, that they allow to bid, but you're absolutely correct, there are some formalities that they have to go through to be able to bid.
But you do have to follow the FCC's rules
Yep, yep.
Regarding that process.
And most of what we're buying, just so you can be more techie here with us, is software and software licenses, and is there anything we can hold in our hand?
Yeah, actually, most of it is, is actual physical items. So there's access points that we're actually buying that are actually mounted in our classrooms in the ceilings. The software component of that, and the support component of that, is actual licenses to allow those access points to communicate with our controllers that we have upstairs, and that's why we had some specific specifications on the equipment that we allowed vendors to bid, because we wanted to make sure that it would operate with our existing infrastructure upstairs, so we didn't have to buy additional infrastructure to support the access points. So on the wireless side, it's about 50/50, you know, half physical access points. We have, you know, one in this, this room, for example, that, that broadcasts wireless. There's a software component to that as well. On the wired side, it's actually all physical equipment, so it's actually all switches which all of the network cables plug into to be able to communicate.
Thank you.
And when will this work be completed?
To be quite honest, this will take us a little while. First, to jump through the remaining E-rate hoops, I had to obviously get all of your approval, and then there's some more forms I get to file, that type of thing. So it'll be, you know, weeks before we even get the equipment in. The one other piece that we need to do is we, for the wireless portions, we will actually run new network cabling from parts of the building into classrooms to be able to mount the access points in classrooms, because we're using a more dense configuration of where the access points are placed than where the current access points are. So that'll take some time, too. So to be, to be bluntly honest, we're talking, you know, a couple months as, as we roll this out amongst other projects.
Well, Matt, thank you for taking the initiative to apply for this, and it sounds like it was a long process, it was about a year ago, but the fact that you did it and saw it through, we, we appreciate that.
You bet.
And Matt, would you explain that a little bit, the Priority One and Priority Two? So you said this was from Priority Two dollars?
Yep, so Priority One, which we've always filed for, is phone, cellphone, and internet, and that service, to be quite honest, there's lots of forms that I get to file, and, you know, processes that I get to file, but that money is more or less guaranteed to us based off of a matrix that takes into account our free and reduced lunch population to see how much of the cost we have to pay for versus how much they'll reimburse us for. And the way it works is they fund all of the Priority One requests first, then, once all of those requests are funded, they look at the money that's left, and then they evaluate Priority Two requests, which this falls under, and, and that's then competitively awarded based off of, you know, the, the needs of the individuals that, that the equipment will actually serve. So Priority Two is not paying for service, it's paying for actual equipment that we will actually own ourselves, which is kind of the difference between the two. Priority One is the service, Priority Two is internal connections. We actually own this equipment, they're helping us buy this equipment to serve our buildings.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Great, any further questions? Or comments? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Matt, thank you very much. All right, that should conclude quickly our action portion of the agenda, and next that takes us then to the superintendent's report. So Dr. Norris?
I wanted to, I wanted to report on a conference I attended about a week and a half ago in Ohio, and it was the Mid-America Association of School Superintendents. I've been in that organization probably about 18 or 19 years now, and the climate among the superintendents this time was very different, and I wanted to describe that to the board so that we don't feel like, and our teachers don't feel like, we're the only ones going through this. But that organization represents 11 states, and there was probably seven to eight superintendents there from every state. And on Friday morning of the week, we always discuss what's happening within state legislatures. We discuss what's happening with reform initiatives, we discuss kind of the lay of the land with politics and everything like that. It was clear that huge changes are going on everywhere. There are some states that are ahead of us in terms of the race to the top initiatives and things like that, but it was clear that true meaningful change was taking place all over the country, specifically in the Midwest. I asked them all, I, I had my opportunity to speak and give a little bit of a report about our district and about our state, and I asked them if, if they too had teachers and other, and principals that were feeling overwhelmed. They did. They were having similar meetings that we were having in our district, and it was, it was just a huge awareness that true meaningful change that's not going to be one of these temporary changes is actually occurring. And again, the states were at different levels of implementation, so maybe we were a hair behind a couple of states, and there may have been a few that were behind us, but it was a whole range of, of where we were. And it was very clear that politics and political influences are driving education, but, and it's also true, though, that the educators are trying very hard to steer the politics in a, in a, in a, in a fashion that would be good for kids and good for teachers. And so I came away from there feeling validated of the work we're doing, but also not feeling that what was going on here and how we were, the types of pressures and stresses that all of our professionals are feeling are not abnormal here. They're very normal, doesn't make them feel any better, but they're normal. The bar is absolutely raising all over the country. Higher standards, higher expectations, common curriculums, higher, and then, quite frankly, the biggest difference, the biggest change was the, the accountability feeling that the superintendents and the other professionals, the teachers, everybody in the districts were feeling. Accountability tied to evaluation, accountability tied to student achievement, and all of those things. It's, it, it was just a feeling that I hadn't experienced in my other 18 years of, of being at that meeting, that, I mean, we always, we always talk about what our states are doing at that, at that last day of the conference, but it was really dramatic this time. Thank you.
No, thank you, Dr. Norris, and sometimes it's reassuring to understand that other people are going through
It is.
Some of the same things that, that we all are going through as well. Now it's time for information from board members, and I'll start with Andrea Sparks.
Well, I don't have any tonight, so, okay.
Right, thank you.
I'll pass it on.
Bernice, Richard?
I attended my first listening session last Thursday at Hoover Middle School, and I was able to hear the concerns of the staff there, and I was very pleased with how Dr. Norris and Dr. Lindeman related to the staff in trying to answer all of their concerns and questions, and I think this is a very valuable thing that we are doing, because sometimes people don't expect the answer, but they just want you to know their concern. So, true.
Thank you, Bernice. And Sue Flynn?
Yes, I just wanted to
Push your button.
You already did that today. No, just kidding. I was at Bunker with Dr. Norris and Dr. Lindeman, and we had good discussion, and I echo Bernice's sentiments as far as just the visibility of getting in the buildings and talking to staff, and, and sometimes just letting your face be shown that you care is very important. But also, I was able to attend at Cunningham last week, the Leader in Me presentation that they had, and boy, if anybody can get over to Cunningham and talk to those Leader in Me students, I was just blown out of the water, and I just, sometimes it gets frustrating when everything's so test score oriented, and, and in our mission, we also are preparing people for citizenship, and those kids just could talk like adults, and, and one little boy said, "Yeah, I tell my daddy, he's gotta go, I gotta come home, and he's gotta take time for me, quit playing his video games and help me learn." And I was so impressed that he was not even three foot tall, and he was, you know, and I thought if those are the kind of kids that our teachers are producing in our schools, I mean, that's something to be really proud of. And I also experienced it, I was at the band competition in Cedar Rapids, and I had my West High seat, and an older couple behind me said, "Oh, you're with the West High band?" And I said, "Yeah," and I thought, "Oh, don't say anything bad," you know? And he said to me, "I just wanted to tell you that there were two or three kids from your band that were sitting behind me, and they were so respectful, and they had a conversation with me, and in this day and age, a lot of people don't care about old people," and that they were so respectful. And I said, "That's better than how any of those bands could ever perform to hear that." So, it's, it's good to, there's lots of good people and lots of good kids in our district, and just keep it up, teachers, and it's hard, and don't always focus on the test score 'cause you have huge impact.
Thank you, that's great to hear. Thank you, Sue. And that concludes pretty quickly our meeting tonight. Just a couple of announcements. The Iowa Supreme Court will be at, at West High on Thursday night at 7:00 PM. They're holding oral arguments, and Bruce Zager, who's a justice in the Supreme Court, is an alum of West High, will be there, and I think it was kind of his choice to, to choose coming back to the area, and he chose West High for the Kirstenbrock Auditorium, and we appreciate that. That's at 7:00. I know there's a lot going on in the district though then, too. I think there's an event at Highland, maybe, on Thursday night as well, there's, there's always something going on, but we appreciate all the work that everybody's doing, so. Our next meeting is in two weeks, here in the same place, 6:00 PM, here in the boardroom on Monday, October 22nd. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried, we adjourn. Thank you all.